...of a Board of Education meeting. And before we get into things, and we're not so formal at this setting, you know, you'll have a few people, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Lesnar, at moments they'll call different teams and groups up and really just ask them to form a line here. And it's really a very simple ceremony. We'll call out your name and you'll just have the opportunity to have your moment in the sunshine, but also our moment for us really just to shake your hand and give you a memento of the resolution. And sometimes when you are as excellent as all the people in this room. I was at Friday night, I was at state swimming. And even though there were an amazing amount of swimmers and divers at that event, when I really thought that there's over 800 high schools in Illinois, I really thought about all the athletes that didn't qualify for state. And tonight is really about telling you that as a Board of Education who represent the community, we see you. We see you and we want to honor you and we want to acknowledge you. Because there's something that we know that I hope you know as well. Cheerleaders, musicians, actors, bowlers, you are in rare air. Dr. Greenin and I always say, we were both high school athletes. So is Mr. Dwyer, so was Dr. Green. I don't think any of us qualified for state. Am I wrong? Oh, okay, never mind, Mr. Dwyer did. But take this as a representative study and unscientific as it is, yeah, state football. No, track, all right, even better, speaking my language. So tonight is really about acknowledging that when you reach excellence, and it's been the great honor of my life to see you perform at Bloomington, to see and hear people on stage and song and acting, to see what our bowlers did over two days, what a great honor. And in so many ways, if a community does not say it out loud, we just go on our business and we assume that this happens every day. And it's so, so important to stop for a moment and just say something very simple as the adults in the community, we have to say something to you and to your parents. We are proud of you. It's as simple as that. When we see you, you make us proud. And it's just important to stop and actually say that. So without further ado, our Board President, Ann Lopez Caniva, is going to open up this meeting and we're going to take it away. Could you give Ann Lopez Caniva and all of our Board members who are volunteers doing this work, big round of applause, please get over the meeting.
Thank you, Dr. McBride. Okay, do I have a motion to reconvene the regular meeting?
Oh, I'll second it.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Travis and second by Mr. Lewandowski. All right, we'll have the regular session reconvene. Kathy, I'm sure you have the time, right, for that? All right, at this time, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance and we're going to have Dr. McBride lead us in this Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, it is ceremony, we've got a flag right over here to sign our nation's Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm Mike Dwyer.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to pass over the mic to Mr. Mike Dwyer.
Good evening, whoa, that is loud. Sorry, good evening. State qualifier, not medalist like the rest of you here, so. Again, just very excited to be here tonight. Thank you again to our Board of Education for all the support that you provide for all of our students and our student athletes, and obviously our wonderful administration here. I'm here to read a resolution, this is getting to be old habit now, for our cheer program. This resolution is recognizing the accomplishments of the Lockport Township High School Cheerleading Team in the 2023 IHSA State Competition. Whereas the Lockport Township Cheer Team claimed the title of IHSA third place state in a large division, large varsity division. Whereas the Lockport Township High School Cheerleading Team competed at the Grosinger Motors Arena in Bloomington, Illinois, February 4th, 2023. And whereas coaches Jen Cremlinde, Danielle Calabrese, Alex Mercado, and Alyssa Scott have aided and guided the members of the Lockport Cheerleading Team in their successes as Lockport Township High School District 205 athletes. Now, therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School, District 205, Will County, Illinois, that the following athletes are hereby recognized for their outstanding achievements and dedication to their school and communities. Coming up, cheer team, now read your names. Olivia Zaplicki. Naya Ditter. Karli Fiorillo. Nina Fiorillo. Grace Gad. Autumn Heinlein. Ava Judge. Grace Kelly. Maya Kenzior. Amber Lamorte. Jake McIntee. Megan Metra. Allison Namikus. Corinne Noack. Emily O'Day. Isabel Papura. Jessica Vanerka. Alexis Rona.
Aubrey.
That this resolution was passed by the Board of Education, Lockport Township High School, District 205, on this day, 27th day of February, 2023.
Lynn's getting organized, it couldn't happen if there wasn't a pick.
Resolution recognizing the accomplishments of Lockport Township High School Band and Choir. Graham Carlson. Stephen Clausen. Delaney Coleman. Jackson Fleegy. Emma Gotcher. Alexandra Jurcic. Natalia Krajec. Madeline Lee. Tara Mastoracos. Jacob Rotogero. Abigail Sanford. Whereas the Lockport Township High Schools musicians have received the prestigious title of Illinois Music Education Association All-State Performer at the Illinois Music Education All-State Conference on January 26th through 28th, 2023, in Peoria, Illinois. And whereas Director Brian Covey, Assistant Directors Chad Getz, Ben Saunders, and Anna Mudrock have aided and guided these students in their successes as Lockport Township High School District 205 musicians. And whereas the students have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their family, their school, and community by achieving this respected status. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School, District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on this 27th day of February, 2023. Congratulations.
Yeah, he's good. Oh, there's one more, right there.
Wait, make sure. Because this is like.
Great, open your resolution.
All right, way to go, you guys. Good job, you guys, good job.
At this time, I'd like to invite the all-state thespians to my right. For receiving the title of the Illinois High School Theater Festival All-State Cast at the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign. Whereas Graham Carlson, Jersey Joniak, and Abigail Sanford have achieved this all-state honor by auditioning in June, receiving their roles in July, rehearsing through the fall and performing at the festival on January 12th through the 14th, 2023. And whereas instructors, Dr. Laura Gilbert and Kenny Musage, have aided and guided these students in their successes as Lockport Township High School District 205 thespians. And whereas Graham Carlson, Jersey Joniak, and Abigail Sanford have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their family, school, and community by achieving this respected status. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School, District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on this 27th day of February, 2023. Congratulations. At this time, I'm going to hand the mic back over to Mr. Mike Dwyer.
Once again, here, like I said before, for the cheer program, getting to be old hand, this group is their third consecutive state championship, so very excited, very proud of this group. This resolution is recognizing the accomplishments of the Lockport Township High School Girls' Bowling Team. Whereas the Lockport Township High School Girls' Bowling Team claimed the title of 2023 IHSA All-State Champions at the IHSA State Bowling Finals, February 18th, 2023, at Cherry Bowl in Rockford, Illinois. Whereas Lockport Township High School Senior Student Morgan LaCossi was named All-State Individual placing second overall, and Lockport Township High School Senior Abby Miller was named All-State Individual placing 12th overall. And that this win is the third consecutive state title in three years for the girls' bowling team. Whereas coaches Linda Saziga, Andrew McCormick, and Jeff Vandenberg have aided and guided the members of the Lockport Girls' Bowling Team in their successes as Lockport Township High School District 205 athletes. I'll introduce the team. Cece Gilbert. Cassie Katos. Katie Katos. Taylor Lane. Lauren Lane. Maddie Lave. Morgan LaCossi. Abby Miller. Paige Mattisek. And Brooke Stroud. Now therefore being resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School, District 205, that the following athletes are hereby recognized for their outstanding achievements and dedication to their school and their communities. That this resolution was passed by the Board of Education, Lockport Township High School, District 205, the 27th day of February, 2023. Congratulations, girls.
Second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Lewandowski, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. On behalf of the Board of Education, I just want to give a few words here. First of all, congratulations to all of you, and congratulations also to the parents. I know that, you know, just being there, I'm sure, I know I attended Sunday, you know, with this rally for the three peak champions of the girls' bowling. I am so proud of all of you, and as Dr. McBride said, you know, we're very, very proud of you. You have definitely, all of you, you know, athletes, you know, everything, you have put us on the map. So again, thank you for all you have done. Parents, thank you for all the sacrifices you do for your children. We greatly appreciate, you know, everything you do. But thank you again. At this point, I'm going to give a five-minute recess. All right, thank you.
Good night.
A great night.[1471.01]
Back in session, so we're going to start with our student government.
Hello, guys.
Hello.
How are you? We just want to give you a quick update. We're missing two of our board members tonight due to they have lacrosse tryouts on the field. One of our board members came straight from the turf about 10 minutes ago. But other than that, as the board, we wanted to just discuss what we are sort of planning on doing in terms of our future. As of right now, as of last Friday, I got accepted into the University of Florida, which I will, as a, thank you, about 95% sure that I will be attending there come next fall, and I'm planning on majoring in business and minoring in actuarial science, which would be what I would want to become.
And then I'm currently deciding between University of Tampa and Marquette and plan to major in biology.
And then I'm 97% sure I'll be going to Purdue for biomedical engineering on the pre-med track. Thank you. And so then we want to talk a little bit about TARP Week, which was a couple, two weeks ago. We were going to say that we're really grateful to have that event and that the week was a lot of fun. The dress-up days, we had a lot of creative ideas, a lot of people expressing their creativity through the days. And then we would have liked to see a bigger turnout, like bigger participation in the dress-up days, but I still think that turnout was pretty good. We also, TARP Week was pretty exciting with the intramural basketball playoffs. That was pretty fun to watch, and, go ahead, Kyle.
I'm talking strictly about the dance, which was, it was very well. It went very good. In terms of the tickets and entrance/exit, it went very smoothly with tickets on GoFan instead of purchasing at the window in the lunchroom. It was a lot easier, and compared to previous dances, there wasn't lines out of the door like there had been at homecoming this year, which was nice, so we just got in and went straight in. The dance itself had great music, and it was overall a great time. I personally stayed in as soon as I went into the field house and didn't leave until it ended. So, yeah, it was a great time.
And then we wanted to talk about the student body just as a whole. To start the senior class, I feel like the majority of us are a lot less stressed now that the college applying process is over and now it's just like decision time. So that's definitely a big weight off our shoulders, and senioritis is definitely real, across the board. And then most of us, I feel like, are just trying to go to everything and participate in everything we can because like all of our lasts are starting, like our last TARP, and we have prom coming up, which a lot of people are looking forward to, and the senior dinner dance too, because that's just our class, so I think that'll have a good turnout. And then for the student body as a whole, I feel like a lot of people are a lot more motivated now because spring sports are starting, and I think there's a lot of people getting involved with those and trying new things, and it's just to be part of something, which I think is really cool to see everyone trying to be a part of our school. And then lastly, our upcoming events, we have St. Baldrick's on the 16th, so I think a lot of people will go to that. I think the game normally has a big turnout, so I think that'll be cool to watch, and then we're working on a dodgeball tournament for March as well to raise money for St. Baldrick's too. Are there any other questions?
Hey, exciting stuff. Thank you.
Good night.
You too. Thanks, guys.
Next is the AT report. Ms. Katie Kishline.
Good evening. Good to see all of you. As a union, we are preparing for another retirement party. The date will be May 24th, just to put that out there. And I will kind of go off of what they just said. I teach all seniors, so today we were bringing up the senior dinner dance and prom tickets with the sales and making sure that they know when their permission slips were due, so that is happening everywhere. Wanted to give a shout-out to our counselors who did an amazing job with registration. You know, that's a big job to overtake within three weeks, so just wanted to, you know, let them know that we see them. And to our maintenance staff, once again, the dances were set up. Everything's always ready to go. I come to work a basketball game. They have my extension cords waiting, so I would be lost without them, and the district notices them as well, so just wanted to take a minute to say thank you for that. Other than that, just counting down till the end of the school year, so it's a good time of the year. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Katie.
The IASB report. Ms. Luanne Johnson.
Well, I guess somebody got a copy of the resolutions, position statements. See, like you just did something, they come up again. So please review them, and if you have any suggestions for some new resolutions, let me know, and we'll try to send them in. So, there's some other stuff. Do you want to cover that, Dr. McBride?
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Chavez. Did you, I didn't want to cut you off. I thought I heard you. Got it, got it. Okay, great. Yeah, just, you know, a few other things. One, just reminding board members, important thing. You should have received an email, as all the administrators here did as well, about your Will County Statement of Economic Interest. That changed last year. You need any assistance, you're reading it, you're not sure what you should write. Obviously, Kathy Maxwell and I are here to help, but that is due by May 1st, and then it's $15 a day fine after May 1st. So, you know, help us to help you in filing that Statement of Economic Interest. Also, I didn't include this here, but I've been in conversation with our seven feeder districts. As you know, I meet with all the superintendents once monthly, and one of the things that we're talking about, and we talked about it at our board self-evaluation, is just board members getting to know each other. So something that we're working on for April is each superintendent and nominally board president, or if the board president can't make it, a board member, just meeting here at Lockport Township High School. That would not require an Open Meetings Act because it's not our entire board and District 92, or Homer 33C, or Taft, or Mill, Calvin Grove, et cetera, et cetera's entire board. But just an effort for board members, board presidents, superintendents to connect, have a conversation. And I believe the date that we have been kicking around right now is, I want to say it's April 13th or April 21st, but it's a Wednesday evening, and I will get you that exact date. I'm sorry, I don't have my calendar in front of me.
Should we meet on the 21st?
We settled on a Wednesday, Mr. Navara, so I don't know. And we're thinking board presidents, unless, you know, the board president can't attend that, then, you know, board presidents would reach out to one of you to see if you could attend. Just to start that conversation about future meetings, to just to get to know your fellow board members in the community. We did, you know, one of the commitments we had was just to, you know, go over different aspects of our, you know, our board protocols. Board members, you have them in front of you, but the three that we haven't gone over yet are speaking with one voice, communicating with the media, and then closed-session meetings. Just the protocols that we use for those. I'll put them up here on the screen. And, you know, this is just to make the public aware, but also to remind us of how we hope to, you know, agreements we made at our self-evaluation of how we hope to operate. I don't know if there's anyone who wants to, you know, comment on these three: speaking with one voice, communicating with the media, or closed-session meetings, or just thoughts or comments that you have about those three protocols. The first, speaking with one voice, really, you know, comes from what we, you know, worked with with IASB, that the board only sort of draws its authority from the entire board, not individual board members. The media, those are the protocols we established, either the board president or the superintendent to represent themselves to the media. And then closed session, just really the important, we had a closed session tonight, the importance of confidentiality, and the information that we share is highly sensitive in closed session, and just the need to maintain that confidentiality because sometimes we're talking about human beings, and the board is able in closed session to do that, to talk about evaluation or litigation. But to be confidential really protects the district, but also protects the individuals that are involved. Any comments or anything board members want to, on those three protocols? And those are at the front of your folder. Yeah, Ms. Johnson?
I know the public sometimes gets confused as to when you sent in an email to us. The superintendent responds. He will confer with the board president or some of the members, and we had all agreed to have him to respond versus you get eight different emails. You know, so one voice is, our voice is through the superintendent because he is our employee to respond to the public, so that is why he does that. So I know it's confusing to the community when they send it to the board and they just, they get a response. Every now and then, the board president, she will speak up if there's something that she really needs to address. And we vote on that board president to be our representative, you know, in matters like that.
And I appreciate that kind of interior life because typically when you receive @schoolboardlths or @schoolboardlths, you know, that's exactly what happens. I reach out to Mrs. Lopez. Can you, we talk about what, you know, does the president believe a response, you know, should be. I usually will throw some ideas. And then there are many times where, you know, because you have to spend time on the phone with me, we'll say, well, we'll timeout here. We better talk to each board member and see how do you feel about it before we respond, which can sometimes lead to a delay in the response, but we do want to respond. Also, just one thing for the public and folks here. If in any way, board members, because it all goes to you, if you begin a conversation online, we're trying to avoid a violation of the Open Meetings Act because you can't really have a conversation or engage in a conversation online because that counts as a meeting too. So in me responding on your behalf, either with the media or speaking with one voice, that allows you not to fall into an Open Meetings Act violation where you're having a meeting online and you really, all your meetings should be taking place in public.
In general, I just appreciate the publishing of this because I feel like the community is better aware of, you know, exactly what things are for. For example, closed-session minutes, we can't just talk about anything we want in closed session. It's very specific what we talk about in there, and then everything else is open to the public, and if something comes out of closed session that needs to be voted on, it will be in the agenda.
Yeah, and I appreciate you saying that, Dr. Shaw, because there are very, you know, just for the public, people listening at home, people here, very, very specific reasons that we can talk in closed session. For example, tonight, and we have to publish on the agenda, what is the type of conversation we're having tonight? It was an evaluation and personnel conversation. We're not at liberty to share that in an open session, but we do have to tell the public that is what the conversation is going to be about. Or it might be about litigation, or it might be about student discipline, but there is a very narrow band of what the board can talk about, and we have to declare what at least the Open Meetings Act topic is. Anything else? Just reflections or conversation? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, legislative report.
I think we have foundation report.
Foundation, I'm sorry. That's right, that's right.
Just wanted to highlight a couple of things for the board this evening. In front of you, everyone got their VIP invitations to Casino Night. We'd love to have you. Casino Night is going to be March 10th. The foundation has been receiving some, just, you know, some really great support from our community. This work makes you feel like how important the high school is to our community. So I just wanted, because of that, I wanted to highlight that we've had in the last nine months, I didn't go all the way back a year because it may have been more, but from kind of the summer on, we've had 35 local businesses support the foundation with the sponsorship, and over 40 businesses support us with a donation for an auction item or some kind of, you know, coming alongside us. So I think that that really speaks to who our community is and what we're doing and how they feel about our school. So I'm super excited that the foundation continues to put forth more opportunities to, you know, connect with our community. So, and in that also, with those conversations, this year, we've been able to add an additional six scholarships that were funded through community members or organizations for the class of 2023, meaning the foundation now has six additional scholarship applications out there to offer our students. So those are two really great highlights. And then, just to kind of finish it up, we're working on completing our website, which will live on the Lockport High School's website, so you'll be able to click and find us very easily. In that, you'll also, we'll also highlight our sponsors so people can be recognized as supporting the foundation and the school. Our next meeting is March 7th at 4 o'clock in this room. And I'm happy if you guys have questions, but again, happy to see you. If you want to come out and, you know, meet some fun local people at Mistwood, Great Hall, on Marquette.
That's Friday, right?
It's a Friday. It's Lent. There'll be fish options.
How much, wait, how much are the new scholarships?
Oh, they vary. Two of them are $2,000. Two of them are $2,500, and the last one, I think, is $500. And that doesn't, that doesn't preclude the, like, the foundation itself also has their scholarships, so it doesn't, it's not replacing anything. It's in addition to. Great. Thank you.
It is a legislative report, and this is a busy legislative season. Where the legislator is right now, you can see as board members on the agenda would have highlighted and provided the links, these are all proposed pieces of legislation that are right now in House or Senate committees. And as you know, we belong to the High School District Organization of Illinois. We also belong to Scope. We monitor these, and we monitor the potential impact that they can have. Occasionally, I will encourage board members to call our state senators or call our state representatives, especially when there's something that is alarming to us. Last month, or last, really, fall, I alerted board members to a mandate on the comprehensive sexual education standards that we, as, for example, High School District Organization of Illinois, we opposed, and we successfully kept that off the floor of the Senate. Last week, I had these bills, but actually, today, I was in another briefing, and just a few bills, if you don't mind, I read from my notes, a few bills that we're keeping our eyes on. One is in the House and Labor Committee. I haven't even been able to share this with some of my colleagues, but it is proposing, it's a bill and committee, that proposes an automatic increase beginning next, beginning in 2024, of $20, then 21, 22 for all educational support professionals. And that would be really anybody in a support capacity that's not a licensed teacher, counselor, administrator. My guess is that would increase our costs in terms of pay by about 30%. Right now, not all of our support professionals are paid 20, 21, 22, and that is not part of our financial planning at all. And we're all for a living wage for people, but we're keeping a very careful eye on that, on that bill. but we're keeping a very careful eye on, on that board, on that, um, bill and it's moving. Another bill is in the House Education Committee that is extending the role that we have on bullying. We already have a fairly extensive, because of the Office of Civil Rights, responsibility for bullying we know about and bullying we don't know about, bullying that occurs in school, bullying that can occur online. This would extend, uh, not only our surveillance, but it would extend the penalties. And there is a lane, as board members know, of expellable offenses. And it would put bullying in that lane if, if, you know, sufficient. We're also following a number of bills proposed that are, are changing or rewriting evaluation in the state. Primarily because evaluation, as many people here know, it's a very extensive, rigorous process for our licensed staff. And there is a belief that the weight of that, it's, we're primetime, very busy right now with performance evaluations, that that is dissuading people from staying in teaching or coming into teaching. The concern we have in, in our group is that without performance evaluation, how can we ensure quality? So there are parts of that bill that we might agree with, there are parts we don't agree with and want to be careful. For example, there is one bill that a, a licensed staff member could gain tenure in three years with a proficient rating. If you obtain proficient, which is not excellent, in three years you hold that rating, you get tenure. We would oppose that. We have a higher, higher bar there. Then also, there are a few, a board member, uh, interesting. Two, there's a proposal from a legislator in Naperville, Janet, I think Janet Yang-Ror is proposing two things. One, if you're a board member and you have childcare issues and you have to be at home with your children, that is one of the acceptable reasons to come into the board meeting by phone or online. And then also, um, a revision of the Open Meetings Act that if the board for any reason feels that it's dangerous to meet in person, there are threats, there's disruption, there's, that the board can, without the notice that we have now, switch to an online meeting. So interesting bill that, that we're following as well. So those are just some things in Springfield. Any questions that I can answer? Those are all bills in committee. They haven't made it to the floor of the House, haven't made it to the floor of the Senate. They're all being explored in committee.
Is there a notice that we have to give in order to switch from an, uh, in person to online?
We would still have to, Mr. Navara, pu, publish that on our website, publish what we're doing on our website. But right now, we have to, if we're going to do an online meeting, we have to publish that just like our agenda materials where it's forty-eight hours in advance. In essence, this bill is proposing that it could be an hour in advance. It's really in response to some of the things that have happened in the past two years at board meetings where, you know, some boards have not felt that it's safe to convene, um, uh, in, in, in person. You know, there have been very specific threats, sometimes threats of violence or threat bomb threats, so the board can continue its work, but, but meet safely. So we're just paying attention to this. That's the report, legislative report.
Thank you. Do you have any public comment follow-up?
Yeah, public comment follow-up. Last month, we had one, um, uh, public comment and that was from, uh, this is Margaret Broderick. She's the vice president of Joliet Junior College. And I asked, you know, her, could I follow up with her? She referred me to Dr. Klein Namua, president of Joliet Junior College. I had coffee with him the very next week. And really what we talked about and she asked you to embrace is the twelve by twelve by twelve plan. And we're learning more and more and more about that. Dr. Christophero is ill this evening, but she's working very hard on two critical pieces of coursework, transitional math and transitional English, so that our students can take right here the entry level math and English that would be offered at JJC, they can get that done. And, and Dr. Namua's vision is that every senior will have at least twelve credits at JJC before they graduate for $12 a credit. So $144 and you start with a college transcript that can go to any public university in the state. Little bit of the rationale behind that is last year, there were 10,000 high school graduates in Will County. Thirty percent of those graduates had no post-secondary plan that they declared. And that was countywide. And we all know that having a post-secondary plan is so important. And really making dual credit, we've talked about advanced placement credit, but the likelihood that if you end your senior year and you have actual college credit, you are more, more likely to go to a community college or to go to university and continue your education. You also have an economic leg up, right? Those credits are dollars. And if you're a parent sending a child to college, you know what I'm talking about. And so that's all to incentivize the idea of post-secondary planning. And so it was very good conversation. You know, I would encourage the board to support that. I think Dr. Namua's been very receptive because sometimes with dual credit, we have some things we don't necessarily agree with. We constantly ask about the qualifications. To teach dual credit, you have to have a master's in your subject area and we are always asking the junior colleges to relook at that. We also, there are some things that we do that we think are more progressive with teaching and learning sometimes than in college. So we, we work that out. It's a fairly good relationship.
You mean progressive?
Well, I think, uh, Dr. Navara, there's some things in being a college teacher myself that colleges do that I would not say are current practice and assessment. For example, um, if you want, you know, something that we do frequently is if, if you want to produce the best writing, then allowing students to rewrite sections of their writing and to earn credit for that rewriting is, is very important. You know, rarely does any human being just nail it on a, a first draft. At the college level, my colleagues at North Central generally don't, don't allow that. It creates a lot of stress. It sometimes doesn't create the best product from college students. It sometimes leads to plagiarism. And, um, I would say JJC, you know, might, might in cer, certain courses embrace that as well. So we constantly are in dialogue about, you know, maybe some practices that we have that are more informed by national resource, research can, you know, be something that, that JJC can consider.
I have a question.
Yeah.
If a student was low income? I know $12 don't seem like it's a lot, but if they can't afford that, you know?
Yeah.
Would the school supplement?
We, we are and we do. And there's a whole bunch of new legislation that, that requires that. And just di, um, Ms. Johnson's holding her hand, something I put at your space. It's a little bit about the, it's a flyer about the twelve by twelve by twelve program. And then a meeting I was also in as a follow-up, which is the annual superintendent's meeting. So there are ample supports, not only at JJC, but also supports that we have. And you might remember in the last group of policies that you approved, there is waiver for low income school fee, waiver for low income students qualify and for military families of active military.
But dual credit classes?
Mm-hmm. That would be included in a school fee.
The same thing that future class from Lewis, will that be similar?
We haven't talked about that.
No, I, I actually spoke to.
It came up.
Yeah, I actually spoke to, um, our guidance department chair, Mr. Furkelock, today with some questions about exactly those things. And I told him that I would like him to provide me a list of all of those types of things so I can talk to our attorney about what our options are. And then we can figure that out from there for the students. We definitely don't want to insert barriers.
Right.
For people who have income situations. So we definitely need to talk about that.
And, and that partnership, I, I just, I was at a separate event where I was rep, we piloted something in the district, the Resilient Youth Curriculum, and talked to a number of, of Lewis professors who happen to be attending that event. And they're, they're excited that's a different than dual credit. But that is just to remind the board what Ms. Johnson is referring to in the public. We have an agreement with Lewis University, three classes this year, six next year. And apparently, they're very desirous. People want to teach these classes. We have seniors who are getting on a bus and they are taking a full college class during cer, once a month, going, taking that full college class on Lewis's campus. So that's not dual credit, that's earning a college credit, a three-hour credit in the Introduction to Communications course. So.
So the difference is dual credit, they're doing it here.
Taught here by our staff.
And the one at Lewis is there.
It's taught by their staff.
Okay.
The key with both is, you know, you could never, for the fee that we charge to take the Lewis class, paying, you know, you're saving, you're taking a class for, what would generally be $3,000, $4,000 for 300. So it's, you know, getting those three credits is far more affordable, but you bring up a really good issue. And as does Mrs. Croy, we don't want to have barriers there.
I talked to one of the teachers involved in that. Cause I have a good relationship with Lewis and instructors. And, uh, they were writing a grant.
Right.
To try to give scholarships. And I don't know how the scholarship would work.
Right.
You know, to help offset some of that cost.
Yeah, Dr. Christophero and I, we have an upcoming meeting about a grant that they've written that links us and Fairmont School District.
In Fairmont, yeah.
Into that, that exact proposition of making sure that these kind of college opportunities are accessible to people who have, you know, what oftentimes is temporary income issues, so that those don't pass by. Well, I'll bring up income, you know, we, we talked a little bit earlier today about equal opportunity schools in my report. It is, it is a significant factor in our district. Yep. Thank you. Thanks for. That is all.
Thank you.
Public comments. At each regular open meeting, members of the public and district employees may address the school board during the public comment section of the agenda. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to be respectfully followed the guidelines of Policy two colon two three oh and Policy eight colon three oh available upon sign-in. Public comments are important to the board. However, it is customary not to respond on issues until time has been taken to gather information and discuss all options. Lack of action or response does not imply lack of interest in the issues brought to the board. And there is none. All right, communications, there is none. And then freedom of information, you had those in your board packet. Moving on to then the approval items. All right, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the January twenty-three, twenty, twenty-three Regular Board of Education meeting minutes?
Some move.
Aye.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions to those minutes? Attorney Kieran, non-oral call.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson? Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
All right, next I have, do I need a motion to approve the January twenty-three, twenty twenty-three Regular Board of Education meeting closed session meeting minutes?
Some move.
Sorry.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions to those closed session minutes?
I have a question. Was I there January? I can't recall. I know I skipped on one meeting recently. Bless you.
Thank you.
I believe you were.
I was?
Since you were there.
I thought you were sick in December, Michael. Oh, December, okay. Thought, so why don't we just check the attendance, you know?
Since he was there.
Bless you.
Month before.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I can't remember everybody. This is, I didn't want to go for something.
Right.
I didn't mention. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, roll call.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Navara?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
All right, next we have Treasurers Report. Mrs. Croy?
Treasurers Report, all the typical reports, bills payable, financial reports. In the financial reports, um, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. As you'll see on the cash flow of the Treasurers Report, we're in the third month of the declining balances because we're, you know, we haven't received property taxes in a few months. So just, that's something to keep an eye on as it shows the indication that we collect all of our money in one month and, or a couple of months, and then we spend it the rest of the year. So that's just kind of indicative of the pattern that we usually have. The other thing is the statement of position. Every month, uh, as, in accordance with one of the board goals for finances, keeping six to twelve months cash on hand, I do indicate what our twelve, our month's cash on hand is on the bottom of the statement of position. So I'm just kind of reminding the board that, that, that is there. So it does drop over the months as we spend down. So we're at ten, we're still within our board goal. But that's something I keep an eye on. And then looking at the expenditure, expenditures, the, another thing that I typically watch is the percentage spent at the time, right? So we're through January, these reports are January's Treasurers Report, so they're through January. Typically, the expenditures, because the bulk of our expenditures are salaries and benefits, they are based on the number of payrolls each during that timeframe. So I usually take a look at how many payrolls have we had through that month and as compared to twenty, total twenty-six payrolls because we get paid every, um, everyone in the district gets paid every two weeks. And those percentages line up exactly where I expect them to be across those funds. The couple that are a little skewed or high really have to do with the, the transfer that, um, the board approved between funds previously. That skews the total a little bit because it's one big lump done at one time. But if you exclude the exception item of that, all of the funds look like they're tracking to budget. So like the comparison is for purposes of budget. Are we tracking where we should be? Or is there some reason that maybe would indicate we would need to amend the budget because something wasn't, um, expected, right? So that's just pointing that out. Correct.
As it compares to, you know, where we should be somewhat in the midpoint and we're, we're on pace where we should be.
Absolutely.
Spending too little, we're not spending too much, we're kind of right where we should be.
Right.
Those percentages comparatively to last year help us understand that.
And as I mentioned last month, I, um, I do have the upcoming action considerations that are still sitting there. Um, I'm still waiting on lease documentation to bring to the board for the laptop lease and the activity bus lease. So that'll sit there until I get the lease documents so that the board has something to approve. And then the last thing is the bus bid. We did actually open the bus bid and have it publicly read aloud. We received three bids. It was just opened last week on Tuesday and there wasn't enough time to evaluate all the bids and all the specifications because the way the bid process works, yes? Okay, the way the bid process works for the buses is we list all the specifications for all the various parts of the bus and the bidders can write if there's a variance. So what has to happen when we get those, we look at the total cost of the bids, of course, but then we also have to compare. Okay, is the low bidder meeting the specifications or are they suggesting something that doesn't meet our specifications? So there's a comparison that has to be done on that and we work with the mechanics and the director of transportation. Dana and Pryor in my office works with them to evaluate those. And then we will be bringing a recommendation to the board hopefully in March. Okay? Yes?
Are we looking at getting electric buses?
Not yet.
Good.
We are monitoring those because, um, at this point, they're first more expensive. We did, what we're doing in our bid is we're, um, we have all, we've had an alternate. So that's the other pro, part of the bid process. You can bid what you currently have and what you want. And then you can also bid an alternate, which we've done the last couple of years for electric buses. Actually, no, gasoline buses is what we've bid an alternate for this time. We have not yet bid electric. There's a, so too much cost in the infrastructure at this point still. And we also have some concerns about distance and charging. So we're not kind of ready to be the first ones through the gate on that in Illinois.
Good.
We're kind of waiting to see what happens, right?
I saw this, you know, I have too much time, I had to start reading IASB stuff. And they were talking about, um, there was this, uh, grant out there. They was pushing electric buses, CNG, and that was the third one. What was the third?
Solar, I think it was solar power.
So have we considered CNG?
I think they were also pushing, pushing, um, uh, like hydrogen powered buses, if I remember correctly.
That was the third one, anyway.
Yeah.
So, but we're on a wait and see?
Yes, we're pretty much on a wait and see because, um, cost, it's not just the cost of the bus, it's also the cost of the charging, right? The electricity itself, where we can, where we can recharge, like on a trip, um, that's also a consideration. So all those factors are kind of, makes us a little nervous about trying to be like a first district in kind of thing.
Do they have hybrid? I guess that's the name where it's.
I don't know the.
Gasoline plus.
Yeah, we haven't seen that.
Plus electric.
I don't.
I know they have cars like it, I don't know if they have buses.
I have not seen that, anything about that, no.
You know, you might see public buses that are propane-powered, natural gas.
Propane.
And there's a lot of, there's a lot of buzz in this area because a very large line electric opened up in Joliet, one of the largest electric bus facilities in the country. You know, but like Stephanie said, our buses do transport over sixty-five square miles students to school, but they also take students to Lewis University, they take students to Bloomington, or, you know, LaSalle Peru. So that, like, the statewide infrastructure for buses to recharge is, it doesn't exist, so.
Sometimes for those, some of those trips, we use charter buses, but our buses do travel those students along.
Yeah, pretty far distances.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah.
Yeah, great question.
Any other questions on anything in the Treasurers' Report?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the January twenty, twenty-three Treasurers' Report as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lewandowski and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions to those? All right, roll call.
Johnson? Navara?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Lopez Cunha?
Yes.
Next we have our superintendent's report.
All right, thank you so much. Just before getting started, thank you again to the board for making the time to acknowledge a huge amount of students doing, you know, incredible state work. You know, just somebody who's for thirty-four years watched students perform. What's really amazing, I think, about all of those performers, they neglected to mention is, is all of them had a tough spot. You know, our bowlers started the day on Saturday in fifth place. And it's just rare that you see someone claw their way up to the state championship. Our, our cheerleaders, two days in a row made a mistake that they don't generally make, but then they picked it up later in their routine with their degree of difficulty. Then the volume of students that you saw, it might not seem, you know, music, that's a large volume of students to be all-state. That's a large number of students to be on the all-state cast, to have three. It's typically, you know, one from a school, if that, so thank you for making time. We earned another state trophy this weekend in wrestling. You'll see them next month, third place. We had a female wrestler who earned a second place in her weight class. So, you know, porters are doing great things. In so many ways, those performances are really the life lessons that I think we're all, the adults, we're looking for. You know, in future parents, professionals, citizens, those kind of things.
We have quite a few female wrestlers.
We do, we have a, we have a, it is a growing sport here and a growing sport in the state. It's amazing, it really is exciting. Um, I also want to acknowledge my good colleague, Jeanette Castillo. We're coming to the end of Black History Month, and everybody here has done great things, but Jeanette really has put her shoulders into it. We had a very exciting, just sort of rally last Thursday with the Jesse White tumblers. And one, we found out that one of our very own students is a Jesse White tumbler and performed. We also found out that Dr. Greenan is very brave. If you want to see a photograph online, Dr. Greenan is not only standing, he's six-eight stature, but he's got his hands in the air, which I think had at least two more feet, I think. And a Jesse White tumbler is vaulting over him, which is pretty amazing, pretty brave. I just didn't want Dr. Greenan to break his nose, you know?
Can you please explain real quickly what a Jesse White tumbler is? I think I have an idea, but I...
Yeah, they are probably a picture, I don't have a picture on my computer, but they are a Jesse White, the former Secretary of State, many years ago.
Been around for a long time.
Yeah, he was around forever, they've been around forever. He just created kind of a focus on tumbling, gymnastics, fitness, performance. And if you ever have the opportunity to see them, they are amazingly talented in a parade or a rally like we have.
You should Google them.
Yeah, Google them, YouTube them.
When you said Secretary of State, I remember you said something in our board update about it, so now I remember.
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty amazing. And tomorrow, Mrs. Castillo secured a, a local speaker that's coming in during Compass, talking in the auditorium, kind of wrapped the month up. You know, many of you know that my children are Chinese. And one of the things a social worker said to me about my children is, you can only be proud of your race when you see people of your race doing things that make you proud. And I think that's part of what we're trying to do with Black History Month. A couple of things, I'm going to suspend my comments on equal opportunity schools and central campus facility improvements to keep out exploring our board goals. Last month, we explored the board goal of college and career readiness. We're going to take a jump with Mr. Kandari into the board goal related to human resources, which is a goal to create a staff as diverse as our students. You might remember in our demographic report, Jerome McKibben said to you, you are not going to have suddenly a large population increase or a population decrease, but he did say, you are going to have different types of students coming to Lockport Township High School. And so we want to stay ahead of the curve, be ready always in our hiring to greet, greet the needs of those students. So I'm going to turn it over to Tony. You might remember, we had one-pagers that you received this in December. I'll pull his one-pager up and some slides, but he's going to talk a little bit through. We wrapped up our sectioning, we're about to propose some staffing and get into the hiring season. So I'd really invite the board to ask Tony questions about how we're going to create new staff members to our district. Tony, I'm going to get your slides up right now.
Okay, while you're doing that, thank you, Dr. McBride, thank you, board, thank you, visitors tonight. At any time, if you have a question or you need me to re-explain something, please jump in, stop me whenever you need to. While Dr. McBride is getting these up and ready to roll, just a personal note, there has probably been no tougher time in the HR offices across the state than, than the last couple of years. It, it has been challenging, to say the least, with all the things that have been going on in, in the country and with the pandemic and with just the exodus of, of teachers and administrators across the country and here in Illinois. It definitely has created some voids. We know that there are fewer high school graduates who are going to college for particularly education, which means there's even fewer for secondary education. So those are definitely some things that, that those of us in the HR field are, are keeping an eye on. About eight years ago, I'll try to keep this as sure as I can, about eight years ago, a bunch of, of the HR directors from many of the area high schools, Homewood Flossmoor, District two thirty, the Thorns, the Riches, got together and we kind of formed our own group, the South Suburban HR Administrator Group. And we've kind of grown from those five or six of us that would meet every couple of months to now over forty school districts that kind of get together and, and we have a listserv and we talk through, hey, what do you need? What are your openings for next year? Are you hiring assistant principals? Are you hiring chemistry teachers? Hey, I've got this great chemistry teacher we don't have a place for. Who's hiring? Who needs it? So we've really opened up lines of communication back and forth and in between all the, the different districts in the area. One thing that we, we are doing is this Saturday, if, if you've seen it on Facebook, we've, we've put it out. I'll probably have Ms. Castillo send it out one more time. We are doing a recruitment fair in the South, South Suburban School Districts. It's going to be held at Homewood Flossmoor High School Saturday afternoon from twelve to three. If you know anyone who's looking for a teaching position or looking to change, wants to get into different districts, please send them out to Homewood Flossmoor on, on Saturday. It's no charge, it's just all the schools getting together. We sent out information to all the Illinois State Schools, all the Missouri State Schools, all the Iowa State Schools, all of the Wisconsin State Schools, Indiana Schools to, to help us advertise to have folks get in, so.
Do only people with teaching degrees?
For the most part, people are looking for teachers and paraprofessionals, so it's really for the licensed staff, yes.
I think I have.
It's this Saturday at Homewood Flossmoor High School. So just a quick review of the human resources goal that, that the board adopted. We will build a workforce that reflects our community. We're going to develop a recruitment process that attracts those high-quality candidates, and we're going to work to retain those candidates. When I say that we're going to help recruit the, recruit high-quality candidates, that means candidates that will help reflect our student population. You've heard us say it over and over again, we want students to have experiences that, that they can relate to, okay? And a lot of that is having staff members that they can relate to. Retaining effective employees, that goes with recruitment, it goes with onboarding, goes with mentoring, it goes with professional development, it goes along with the culture that, that, that the building administrators help to, to create and sustain as well. Side three. Last October, Dr. McBride suggested I, I go to the Education Research and Development Institute. It's a symposium that they hold twice per year. Dr. McBride's been to it several times, and he, he allowed me to go this, this fall. And it really was one of the most beneficial, I don't want to say workshops, because it wasn't even a workshop, it was a symposium. It was administrators, industry specialists, people from across literally the world who came together to talk about what can we do to increase the pipeline, increase the number of students that are getting into education and pulling those best and brightest folks. We focused a lot on, on diversity, we focused a lot on equity, but we also focused a lot on what can we do as, as schools and school districts to recruit those, those brightest and best. And I, again, I thoroughly enjoyed it. After eleven years in the district and eighteen years in HR, I learned so many new things. And so it, it really was a very beneficial symposium for me. One of the things, and probably the, the main outline, is what you can see now, and that's the Systems Leadership for Equity. And they kind of focused on six, six basic areas of the hiring process. The first one is pre-service reports. The, the, I'm sorry, efforts. The second one is on recruitment. The third one is on induction and onboarding. The fourth one is on professional development, culture building in the school. The fifth on retaining talent and managing the talent. And then the sixth was on having a succession plan, okay? For our, for our discussion tonight, I think we're going to focus on the, the first three. Because those are the three that, that's the season we're in right now, okay? We are in the hiring season. And as Dr. McBride just, just mentioned, we've been working the last several weeks on our tallies, our sectioning, and what our needs are going to be for next year. And as you know, every March, we come to you and we say, here is what we need to keep the school, the school staffed with the, the teachers and the administration and the paraprofessionals that we need to meet the needs and, and the wants of the students, okay? So when we come to you next, next month, we're going to really dive into some of the, here's the reasons why we are rehiring this kind of teacher or that, or that teacher or a teacher in this department, okay? So we're going to focus tonight just briefly on the first three threads. Pre-service efforts, okay? And when I say, when we say pre-service efforts, that's before they come to us or even before they leave us. And I'll, I'll throw a couple ideas out that, that we had, we had talked about. Recruitment, how do we encourage them to come to us? How do we encourage high-quality, diverse candidates to come to us? And then induction, after they've chosen to come to us, how do we grab them and, and seize hold of them and, and, you know, make them want to become porters, lifetime porters, okay?
Make them a part of us.
Become a part of our district, become a part of us, okay? So we're going to focus on, on, on those three. So let's talk a little bit about pre-service efforts. So what are some things we can do? So some of the things that, that we've talked about, I've talked about with Dr. Christophero, talked about with other, other school districts, other HR folks, is we have a preschool here. And so we have students who take the preschool classes. It's a wonderful program, and there's a lot of student involvement. And, and our students are learning how to be great preschool teachers. We are not a preschool, we're a high school. So thinking of ways that perhaps we can work with dual credit, work with the colleges. How can we add some kind of a class that maybe starts with secondary methods for people who might want to major in biology? I think one of the students said they wanted to major, who was up earlier, wants to major in biology. But then what? Maybe biology education, okay? So maybe have a class that, that teaches secondary methods or what it takes to be a secondary teacher, a, a, a high school teacher. And, and work with the colleges to make that credited, to make them not only take the class, but to earn the college credit as they, as they move forward. This spring, I have a, an intern working with me from Lewis University. She is a, a graduate of Lockport, so she's a senior at Lewis, and she's going into the HR field. So she asked if she could come in and see what goes on in HR. Boy, it's a lot, so she's spending a lot of time learning quite a bit. She sat in on some, some training with attorneys that, that I hosted last Friday with HR folks, and she was floored, like, oh my goodness, there's so many things to, to, to learn. But one of her projects that she's going to be working on for me is about growing your own. And what I mean by that is growing your own teachers, seeing, seeing something in either your students or maybe paraprofessionals or other support staff, where we could then support them as they go forward and encourage them to, to take educational classes, okay? So her, her, her project, Austin's project, is, is, she's researching these programs, looking around the area, because there are several school districts that have these programs up and running, and, and to see what we can do to encourage folks before they leave to maybe encourage them into, into going into education. And passing, and coming back, and coming back. A lot of times, there, there's a cost involved, okay, with, with a grow-your-own project. So is that, is, is, you know, finding out how much the cost is, is that something we'd like, you know, we'd come to the board and say, can you help us pay for this? We know in several years, we're going to have three openings in chemistry or math, and we want to encourage these quality students to be math or chemistry teachers. Will the board help with, with those grants? Can the foundation help with those grants, okay? So we're going to look in, in, into those. Any, I'll pause there for a second, any, any questions on that?
Don't we have a future teachers' club or...
We do have a future teachers' club.
Have we tapped them to see?
The focus on that a lot of times is elementary and, and preschool and early childhood. So I want to expand that a little bit more to really focus on secondary, so that, you know, they, they might want to come back to us at high school.
Yeah, you got to have a hook to get them to consider.
Exactly. Dr. Shaw, is, is there anything at, at your school that, that pre-service type programs?
Teaching internship?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's a big one, just utilizing those students, obviously, we can't, they're in high school all day, so they're not going to just go into another high school classroom, but we utilize the middle school a lot for that. They go out, they do lessons with the teachers. Some students come in and they say, wow, it's really hard, I don't know if this is what I want to do. And then some come back and they're like, I cannot wait to come back and work here. So that's just a really good experience for them.
Thank you, thank you. Dr. Huntington?
We also tap a lot of our Aces leaders. We have had a lot of students that have gone on to become special education teachers because of their experience in that program. And I take lots of opportunity to hire them back.
And we have had a few of our...
We have, yes.
Our graduates come back after going through, so, thank you, Dr. Huntington.
You're welcome.
All right, let's talk just a few, a few minutes about, well, probably a little bit longer, about recruitment and selection. This one, this is our, again, our hiring season. So I, I had a little video, we're not going to watch the video, so that's okay. One thing that we, we started already is people-first postings. We kind of, my, my assistant Frankie Hatley in the office and I created a, a new template, kind of more modern, kind of more enticing with our, our, our mottos and our, and really focusing on, on porters and making it people... and making it people-first, like, we're looking for these people. We're not just looking for someone to fill a position. So we have those. That's something we've already implemented, and our postings are all more eye appealing. Mrs. Castillo's office, over the course of the last several months, has really helped broadcast our positions through social media and our website. So we've definitely been looking into that area. We do want to establish a network of area locations, okay? Places to post our position openings in our community, whether that's in local churches, okay? Whether that's at rec centers or community centers, places like that where people stop and see and they look at those boards and, oh, okay, I know someone who's a, who wants to be a math teacher, maybe I'll send them that way. It took a while, but we were able to fill our mechanic position. It's been about a year since we posted that, okay? There's been a long time, but word of mouth, talking it through, getting the word out there, and we found a really great quality mechanic who's going to be joining us. So again, a lot of word of mouth comes out that way. We, there are some districts that have adopted, because Isby has said it's okay now, adopted a plan to pay stipends to student teachers and interns in like the guidance office, like social worker interns, psychologist interns, okay? Looking into that, what would that cost, okay? We, when there's a retirement and people go into the four-year window, we have an idea of where we're going to need folks within four years, so maybe that is something we can look into, maybe enticing folks, opening it up to interns, when social workers, speech, I know we're going to need a speech teacher coming up soon, a psychologist, another social worker soon. So just kind of looking at what other districts do, how much their stipends are, and again, there's costs involved with that. One thing that we kind of brought up and we're using quite a bit is everyone's in human resources. Every person in this room right now, everyone who's within the sound of my voice who can hear this now, you're in human resources with me, okay? You knowing someone and saying, hey, there's an opening for this, why don't you apply, okay? Hey, Lockport's a great place, why don't you go apply, okay? Dr. McBride always talks about looking for candidates with different experiences and how those experiences could add to the overall experience of our students and the growth of our staff. So one thing we want to add is how can we get more voices involved in the recruitment process? We just talked today about possibly having a student voice, okay? Surveying the students, what do the students like to see in teachers? Who's their favorite teachers and why? You know, what kind of teachers do they respond to, okay? Kind of get an idea of the student voice, as well as having more staff involved in the recruitment and interview process, okay, in the candidate process. That may mean having teachers involved in some of the screenings we've discussed. Again, the more we can work together, the more people will look to Lockport as their career choice, okay? Continuing on with recruitment and selection, one thing that we talked about back in the fall at ERDI is to hire tough. It doesn't just mean asking tough questions in an interview. It means really taking a look inside ourselves as we're interviewing. There may be a really great candidate, and we're asking the questions, but are we really looking at what that candidate can bring to the table, can bring to our students, can bring to our community, okay? Hire tough. It doesn't mean be tough, it just means hire tough. Look inside ourselves as administrators, as department chairs, as directors and coordinators, and what is it that we really need? What is it that's going to really benefit our staff and our students? Again, using screening methods, adding voice, encouraging student or current staff members to reach out to their friends and to their acquaintances and to the community and say, hey, come join Lockport, we're a great place to be, okay? As we do every year, Mrs. Croy and I work on the principals and the department chairs to help them understand cost expectations, okay? Obviously, cost is an issue. One thing that we look at each year is when we look at what students are requesting, what courses they're requesting, and we're looking at what staff modifications we may need, either adding a teacher to this department or not needing a teacher in this department, we kind of look at things that kind of offset, okay? So when we have retirees who are at salaries a little bit higher, when we're refilling those positions, okay? What do we have financially? What's the cost of those positions? And can we hire two teachers for the cost of one of the retirees? That's going out, based on the needs and the requests of the students. So that's something we do each and every year, and we work with the principals, we work with the department chairs, that, you know, in some areas, chemistry is a big one. Everyone's going to be fighting for chemistry teachers over the course of the next probably two or three years. There's going to be bidding wars for chemistry teachers. So we know that, knowing that we may have to hire chemistry teachers with a few extra years' experience, maybe that means we hire a PE teacher maybe with not as much experience to kind of balance it out, okay? So we look at that, we look at that each year. Something to keep in mind, and this is something, as I was crunching numbers today, over the course of the next five years, that's starting this year and going through 2027, we'll have 29 retiring teachers in five years. So if you think about that, that is 10% of our staff is going to retire over the course of the next five years, so. Lot of turnover, a lot of opportunities for us to look at expanding our thoughts, expanding who we want to hire, what kind of experiences we want to bring into the district. Pause. Any thoughts or comments about recruitment and selection?
I'm a little concerned about that 29. Is it mostly like math teachers? Is it mostly like, what is the biggest, or is it even?
It's pretty, excuse me, it's pretty evenly spread across. There are two PE teachers this year, one in two years, but then not another one for a long time. So it just depends on the department. One math teacher this year, none next year, but two the year after that. So it just depends on the ages and the experiences of the staff. So it varies, which goes back to what I said earlier on, is now that we, you know, we have an idea of what we need, what can we do? How can we encourage our kids to go and get those secondary education degrees in math and biology and chemistry that we know we're going to need over the course of the next few years?
Looked at people since the pandemic has been looking at changing careers, doing career changes. Maybe, I know you talked about a chemistry teacher, you know, perhaps someone that's in that field, who with the assistance of the high school can get the teaching credentials and have them to do that kind of particular work.
Yes.
Have you looked at that?
We have, and we have done that. One teacher case in point this year, there were no business teachers to be had, there were no graduates with business degrees. We had someone with teaching education business degrees. We encouraged her to go and get her provisional license. We worked with her, and so she's teaching business this year. She came from the business aspect. So yeah, we will definitely use every option and every avenue we can to encourage folks to do that, to come onboard. Any other questions about that? All right. Last section, promise. Last section is new teacher induction, and that's one thing that I think we are strong in, but we can always get better. We do have a strong program when staff comes into our school. After the interview process and after the selection, after they've gone through the principals, the building administrators, the directors, Dr. Huntington, they come in, they meet with me one-on-one, they go through the office, and then come August, we have a new teacher induction program. It's usually three days long. They come in, they get to meet administrators. One thing we've done that I added this year was I added a student voice to welcome them into our school district. And Chelsea came and presented with the Student Equity Action Committee, and the new teachers were like, we're so glad we chose this school because these are the kind of kids that we want. We do have a, just over a year, it's about a year and a half now, new teacher induction series of meetings and learning, talking about the Danielson Framework, talking about classroom development, talking about classroom procedures and things of that nature. The assistant principals pretty much run that, Mr. Bartley, Mrs. Sermon, Dr. Webb Ray, and they meet monthly with all of the new teachers, and it's something that they look forward to. They have a big celebration at the end of the year with their favorite lessons, lessons that worked, lessons that they want to share, things that they've learned over the course of the year. So it doesn't mean it's perfect. There are things I'd like to do. I'd really like to create our mentor program that's more established, that's more concrete, to have our quality top teachers, our veteran teachers, working with our new teachers over the course of two years. Something that we'll definitely be talking to Mrs. Kishline and the union over the course of the next couple of years. One area that I know we really struggle with that I'd really like to focus on is an induction period, an induction program for the non-licensed staff. A lot of times, we have, you know, new bus drivers come on, and they come in and, okay, you've got your license, here's your bus, and it's not quite that simple, but to have someone that they can partner up with. Same thing with office professionals, same thing with paraprofessionals, same thing with folks in the facilities department. To really give them a partner, someone they can work with, a veteran who's been here, who can show them around the building, who can really talk to, hey, go talk to Tony about that, or go talk to Ms. Croy about that, or go talk to John Greenin about that. You know, it's difficult because the folks in the ESP side of things come on at any point in the year. It's not like a teacher who comes in in August and we have them all together, and then we can, you know, continue on with them. There's a new custodian that could come in in October, and then another one in November, and then not one for two months, and then another one in February. So things that, that's definitely a challenge, but it's definitely one that I want to pursue, again, to make them feel a part of our community, make them feel like a porter, okay? Before I pause, as I end my presentation, I encourage everyone here tonight and everyone out in the internet land, encourage our students, pursue those careers in education, okay? Very, very important. Teachers are needed, okay? Teachers are important. One thing that I tell to the new teachers every year is, I bet you can't name the last five MVPs of Major League Baseball. I bet you can't name the last five actors who won the Best Actor Award, but I bet you can name every one of your homeroom teachers from first grade on up. And if you stop, and I bet everyone in this room right now, if you stop and think about it, oh yeah, first grade, it was Sister Mildred, in second grade, it was Miss Ivors, in third grade, it was Miss, I can do it, and I bet you, if you think about it, you can do it. Why? Because teachers are important. They're important. They spend probably more time with our students than a lot of times families do, just because of the length of a school day. So they're important. Encourage your students, encourage your friends, consider education. Any questions or any closing comments about anything?
I think there was like a program, I think it's also important for the teachers to be able to form connections with other teachers. I believe that there was something where, like, the newer teachers can get together and have like a lunch or something? Was that like?
The union does put on breakfast or lunch to start, yeah, they do.
We also do, Mr. Barra, we do new teacher induction over the course of the year, so if you're a brand-new teacher, it's not just the three days, you have sessions that extend for 14 hours over the course of the whole school year. So you're still coming back periodically with that, your class, the people that you were hired with to keep those connections. And then every new licensed staff member does have a mentor. And then connections within departments, too.
So I think that that's important, too. I think being able to like form connections with people who are on the same boat as you and.
Well, we are starting this voyage, so, you know, it's one of the most important things that we do in terms of who the district becomes, is the people you hire. So thank you, Mr. Kandari. I've got two things hanging out from my board meeting, just to draw you to the text. One is equal-opportunity schools. We have a number of people, I know Dr. Greenin is going tomorrow. Inside of your binder, there is a preliminary sample report that looks like this. You can certainly take that with you. You also were provided with something that, working with equal-opportunity schools, creates an insight card ultimately for every single student, and all staff would have access to this. And the idea basically is equal-opportunity schools were exploring, meeting, re-engaging, considering partnering, doing a partnership with equal-opportunity schools. What this organization, partnership with equal-opportunity schools, what this organization does is it identifies students who are underrepresented in dual-credit and advanced placement, given the importance of those college-level classes, and are there students that are not accessing that? In the preliminary report that equal-opportunity schools did for us, kind of coming back to the beginning, low-income students of any white, black, Hispanic are absent from some of our college-credit-granting classes in a partnership with equal-opportunity schools would seek to close that gap. Then the other thing is I provided the board, just you have it, it's a fairly extensive, we're continuing our conversation about renovation in the district, facilities, and central campus in particular. And so I just listed many of the things. On Wednesday, a number of us, Mr. Thompson, our two principals, myself, Mrs. Croy, we're going to visit four sites in the Chicaguan area, suburban area, that have been vintage buildings, fully renovated. Renovation is a third of the cost of new construction, and looking deeply into that as well as surveying our parent community, doing some visioning meetings, re-engaging our citizens advisory council as well. That's my report.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
Since we're going to go over to the reports.
And Dr. Christopher was ill, so, you know, it's a, what happens during the middle of the year.
The Huntington Show, right?
Dr. Huntington.
So I know that you all received the, had the opportunity to review the documents that we attached to our report, but I just wanted to highlight some of the feedback that we did receive from our guiding coalition meeting. So first, under goal one, you know, our professional development program with Troy Gobble and another consultant that we hired to help us with varying instructional and assessment strategies to support all learners continues to be very well-received and helpful in our work. Troy spent the day with us on February 16th with our SST, our guidance teams in the morning, and our DC teams in the afternoon, and we will continue our work with him next on March 21st. Under goal two, teachers and deans are really reporting a decrease in referrals in class behavior, and they are kind of saying it's really aligned to lower levels of frustration. When students are struggling with maybe some math work or some science work, they tend to kind of distract the teacher with behaviors instead of like, look at me, I don't know what I'm doing. And so what we're seeing is that this increased academic confidence of student is leading to lower behavioral referrals in the classroom, which has been very welcomed by our math teachers. is leading to lower behavioral referrals in the classroom, which has been very welcomed by our math teachers especially. And Goal Area Three, this this garnered feedback from our team and asking the questions, like, how can we support our newer teachers that kind of came through during COVID? So a lot of them like had their student teaching over Zoom, and it's been kind of, you know, for some some teachers, they could use some additional support and services in that regard. So we're looking at opportunities to support those teachers a little bit more. And then we are using our SEL tools to evaluate effectiveness of our program. The Guiding Coalition wanted to ensure that all students were receiving homeport lessons as we discussed how we might support teachers and making sure that those lessons are are administered or are provided. And we left, we ended our Guiding Coalition meeting with asking for one word that described what was reviewed. And some of my personal favorites, I'm just going to share those with you, were access, dignity, how lucky we are, progress, and then confidence and confidance. Students are are gaining confidence, are gaining, are being confident, and our staff are feeling that confidence. And then, so I just wanted to quickly bring you back to that train analogy that we used at the beginning, you know, all these systems kind of aligning. And we are discussing the need for clarity, communication, and consistency. We are building that capacity while also increasing our focus. We know we have systems in place. We want to make sure that we are being 100% efficient and effective, and everyone should know where the broad, where to board that train to get them to their destination. Any questions?
And before Dr. Huntington leaves, you know, it's one of the important things on, I believe, March 15th, we'll do another survey. You know, you might see that word, social-emotional learning, and really what we're gauging is, you know, we know our parents are doing their homework at home. I I've never met a a parent of a high school student who doesn't want that student to be better at organization, be better at planning, be better at decision-making. That's the work that parents are doing at home, so we want to make sure we're doing our homework here. When we survey our students, really what we're looking for is what is their personal sense of their own independence? Are they growing in their own independence towards academic tasks, tasks at school, organization? Because we know that if you're organized, if you feel confident about your academics, if you feel connected to your work, you're going to make better decisions, you're going to put a higher priority on that, you're going to have more success academically, and then obviously, hopefully, beyond. So when you see that in serving, that's really what we want to learn and just ask ourselves. Just like our parents every day are saying, how can we help these children make better decisions? We're trying to have some insight into that as well. Thanks, Dr. Huntington.
Thank you.
Let's go have the principal reports.
Good evening, everyone. You heard from Bob and Tony that we've been spending a lot of time thinking about next year. And we really want to publicly give a huge thank you to our assistant principals. You know, the students concluded putting in their course selections for next year on February 10th. They quickly turned around all that data and information and put it into a spreadsheet for us so that we can take a look at, you know, some of our sectioning, so we can really be diligent and efficient on staffing for next year. So we wanted to say thank you because that is a huge task for our assistant principals. And we've spent a couple hours last week, you know, together as a group, taking a look at our needs and our staffing for next year. And then we regrouped and came back today and, you know, took another fresh look at, is this really where we're headed? And is this really what our students need, you know, to be successful? So that's been a lot of our time, but our assistant principals really deserve the credit for turning that around so quickly. At Central Campus, we are gearing up for our annual reality store. So that is coming March 22nd. So we would love to see all of you there, and it's a great experience, you know, for our ninth-grade students. In our report, you saw that many of our activities, the teams and groups, they are doing a great job of advancing and qualifying for additional state competitions and national competitions. And I want to say thank you to, you know, the kids that sat here, our student government. They did a phenomenal job two weeks ago with TWORP, you know, putting out the dress-up days and promoting school spirit, and then our student government sponsors as well for our awesome TWORP dance that we had. And then for athletics, winter sports are officially coming to a close. We're excited to bring more student athletes to you next board meeting to celebrate some of their successes. And as you probably saw tonight, spring sports are off and running. The Field House was full with our athletes trying out for, it was baseball and softball here tonight, but soccer and everybody else is well underway. So we're eager to have those teams get organized and watch them compete.
And this month, once again, we want to continue to give you a little bit of an insight on what we do as principals, something that we're currently working on. And I felt like it was appropriate tonight, especially with us starting in the cafeteria with all the resolutions, to talk about the work of us trying to keep up with all of the students and student athletes of all state, qualifying teams, individuals, all-state status. It has been, once again, just another great season for us. I feel like at the beginning of the year, each weekend, we're talking, our administrative team, Mike Dwyer in the Athletic Department, Brian Lesnar in Activities, as to who is going where, each particular weekend throughout the throughout the months, because we have so much success. We're very fortunate to have the success, the success that we have at both Athletics and Activities. And just this past winter season in Athletics, we've had, of course, tonight, we saw our cheerleading team who finished third, our girls' bowling state champions. We also had our boys' wrestling team that qualified for state, and some individual wrestlers as well. Girls' wrestling, we had two individuals qualify for state. Our swimming and diving team qualified for state. And then on the activities, then, our chess team, we had all-state musicians. We had three students from our culinary team who will be competing at state. And we just found out today, two teams from our robotics club qualified for state later this, actually, in March indicator. So some things that we like to do to celebrate that success is that we have state send-off for our teams and individuals who are going to state. Mr. Dwyer in the Athletic Department does that in the hallway just outside the porter room for Athletics. And Mr. Lesnar does that, we've headed in the auditorium a couple times for those going for activities. I want to give a special shout-out to our assistant band director, Anna Mudrock. She has really increased the level of participation of our pep band and our state send-offs. And we've continued the tradition of having a parade in school for our state champions, as last Tuesday, we were able to do that again for the girls' bowling team. I know last year in particular, some of my fellow principal colleagues would give me a little bit of a hard time, saying, well, it looks like you guys will have another parade. I'm not going to apologize for that. We're going to continue to do that. I really want to thank Ms. Mudrock for involving our pep band in the state send-offs and the celebrations as well. It's been a nice addition. So that has been something that we've been very busy with. We believe in us being present at our events, whether it's Athletics, Activities, or the TWORP dance that we had last weekend, some upcoming things that we have as well. It's important for our students and our staff to see our administrative team at these events. It's very important to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. But just as these guys act at the stage, you know, I'd ask everybody, public and the board, just to think about how in Athletics, chess, robotics, what's being learned? You know, the type of skills, and, you know, I just always emphasize that those are the type of skills that make citizens, make professionals, make parents, you know, and those vestments. Extracurricular always seems like it's extra, like it's optional. But in so many ways, it's a unique feature of American public education you won't find anyplace else. And I think it accounts for so much of, you know, excellence in our society. Great stuff. Jump into these next two.
Chess means state.
They did.
That's nice. Yeah, chess was my high school sport.
Yeah, it's fun. It's a good start. Just sharing with the board, we have a number of, you know, always want the board to be aware when we have people going to tournaments, Betendorf, Iowa, robotics, going down to the Illinois State Championship on March 10th and 11th, very exciting. And then also LTHS choir program going to Orlando, Florida, this coming long weekend. Want you to be aware, we've got porters on the move for a variety of different things, and always want you to be aware of that. Any questions about these trips? Oh, a fourth one, too, I'm sorry, wrestling. And this took place already, but we put it in there because we knew you would see it before the state tournament. Any questions about those trips?
Maintenance report there.
All right, the maintenance report, as always, Mr. Thompson has filled you with so... You know, it's it's amazing when you really look at this, the amount of things that that go on every single month, from LED fixtures to alarm testing that has to take place. And and you can see a variety of different things that we're working on, parking lot, East Campus, Science Department. What I'd like to spotlight for you is something we've been talking about, and just have you and the public understand the practical implications of this upcoming roofing project here at East Campus, its size and its scope. Certainly, you know it's about a $4 million project. But I just want to share a few maps so you understand what will take place. First, I'm going to show you a spring break roofing project. We are going to get after this, and just to show you, this is right at the heart. In the very bottom of that yellow would be the maroon roof, and then extending back is the port. So the week of spring break, the the roofers that were the successful bid will be replacing that entire section. Not a huge area, big area compared to your own home, but they'll be able to get in. After that, we will get an experience of what the noise and the smell will be like over the summer. And then the more massive project will be our first work at a large section of East Campus. Whoa, sorry, I didn't send you running there. But that is the scope of everything that will get done this summer. So far more expansive, a lot more noise, a lot more smell. We'll be moving summer school to the east side of the building and the second floor, to try to keep it far away. Been a part of a number of projects. As you know, when you drive by here in the summer, you ask yourself, is there a summer? The place looks like, especially East Campus, as if though there's been no change from the end of school to summer. But I've been a part of a number of projects like this. You do have to kind of get used to the noise and the smell, but we believe we've got a good plan to to work through the summer. I all, I did want to show you just what this will mean from an impact. We will have to take almost the entire front section of the building. And wow, this is loading very slowly, I don't know why. But for example, our main entrance, door four, will be completely shut down. And this is really a part of the front parking lot. The whole circular drive and main entrance, we'll have to be figuring out where to put our security. But really, for the entire summer, that entire area will be shut down, either with supplies that all have to be dropped there, or with equipment that will be used there, or with all the work that's going to be coming off the roof as well. Anything to add, Mr. Thompson, to spotlight there? Any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. Are they using tar on the roof, or are they using the new stuff?
It's an asphalt roof. So, yeah, so we'll be taking, you know, all the insulation, the base sheet, the cover sheet, everything down, and then they'll be rebuilding it up. So it's like a built-up roof, so it's, you know, it's layers. It's vapor barrier, insulation, asphalt, clopping it on, base sheet, clopping it on again, and then a curtain.
It's the most common covering in school roofing. At least, at least in this area.
Do we have to worry about asbestos?
Pardon me?
Do we have to worry about asbestos?
No, absolutely not.
Around school, around around campus.
No way.
Well, you could have asbestos here.
Because this is some old and something new, you know, so...
Yeah, and just to remind the board, you know, this is coming through a fund balance transfer. This is typically the project that a school would go to referendum to raise the funds. We've planning, 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 so that we can just reinvest into the, you know, really the community's most enduring asset, the building itself. We're responding to water that's gotten under those layers over time. You know, this is about, I believe, 20, 25 years, and just needs to be done.
Good question. Is there asbestos somewhere in the school?
Yeah, we still have flooring.
Really?
Some flooring areas, not too much here at East, more at Central.
But there exists here at East?
Some insulation, very little, but, you know, very little insulation, and some flooring that's mostly been encapsulated. So it's very, very little here at East. It's mostly all been removed over the years. Central, there will be a little bit more.
But it's not loose anyplace. There's loose asbestos, which is the most dangerous kind of asbestos, encapsulated or hard. But if we have any project where you're going to disturb that, you know, disturb that, then we have to remediate it, remove it. Okay, that's the maintenance report.
Thank you.
Consent.
Consent. All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, items two through six?
Some of them.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw, and second by, was it Ms. Johnson? Yes, and second by Ms. Johnson. Are there any questions to those consent agenda items? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. All right, going on to our action consideration items. Do I have a motion to approve the 2023-2024 school calendar as presented?
Some of them.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw, and second by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions to that, to that school calendar?
And I just want to add one comment. There's there's only really one thing that's different. We resolved the institute days here. Putting two at the beginning of the year, last month, we hadn't resolved that. We're putting on April 26th, 2024, a early dismissal. It's a long march from spring break next year to Memorial Day, giving students and staff just a little break. Most significantly, our calendar committee, we didn't talk about this last month, recommended that we devote an entire day to parent-teacher conferences and give our double the amount of sessions for our parents to access staff. And so we are recommending that. State school code allows you to substitute. Five hours of parent-teacher conferences count as a as a day of instruction. So this doesn't minimize our days of instruction, so we did add that.
How closely aligned are these calendars to our feeder districts?
It is extremely aligned, and the wonderful Kathy Maxwell has created an overarching document, which I'm happy to get to. We only have one district that hasn't added to that. But it's extremely aligned in terms of breaks, holidays, there might be an institute day or so often, but very aligned.
Thank you.
We just have to do roll call.
All right, just the roll call.
Travis?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the appointment of the licensed personnel as presented?
I have a quick question. This is the new assistant principal, correct?
It is. It's one of the most exciting things you do. Trish Sermon is retiring, irreplaceable and dominantable. But to be brief, Dr. Green led an outstanding hiring process. Mr. Osbalt is currently a dean, he's also our head swim coach. Lots of great things to say about Mr. Osbalt. In addition, I would count him as a national expert on standards-based grading. So he brings all of that with him. I've I've had him as a guest speaker to my own college class. And I just think an outstanding individual in person in a porter, and will will do great service for us.
Have we met him, or are we going to meet him?
You might have, in in your journeys, he's a dean. He could not be here tonight because he is attending a professional development conference out of state. Typically, he would be here, so we'll get him where he is one way or another.
Yeah, I was I was going to say, like, I thought we were, we were going to meet him.
Yeah, we usually do, yeah.
I'm sure you've met him. I'm sure you have.
But we're recommending this hire because obviously we'll have to replace the dean.
Okay, do I just need a motion?
Some of them.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw, and second by Mr. Travis. All right, no further comments or questions? All right, roll call. Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to approve press 110 group two policies as presented?
Some moved.
Second.
And just, you know, in transparency, there is only one policy that's different than what you saw last month. That's policy six, colon, three, 10. There is a policy that allows students to substitute coursework outside of LTHS. They can do a maximum of four classes. We, you revised that to open that up during the pandemic, it was very broad. And we just pulled back and put some restrictions. Four classes, cannot substitute PE. How is it approved? Who approves it? How are graduation requirements handled? So we brought all of that back in and really returned that policy to what it was before the pandemic. It was very generous in the pandemic to support learners who didn't feel it was safe to come to school. But that is the only change.
All right, so it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Travis, and roll call. Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson? Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Travis?
Yeah.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes.
All right, announcements.
Yeah, very, just a very few announcements. March 10th, you know, it's Casino Night. April 4th is the consolidated election. May 1st, I've talked to President Lopez Caneva about, could be a possible date. Your board meeting in April is not outside of the canvassing zone. So we really are not supposed to seat a new board until canvassing is done. And canvassing will be done a few days after your board meeting, so we will need to have a special board meeting. So I'm just putting May 1st, that's a Monday, out there as a possibility in terms of calendars. May 14th, you do have a deadline though to seat new board members, so that's very important, that has to happen by May 14th. And then also June 26th, as what we're recommending for our June board meeting. Why typically the board is not met on state holidays. June 19th, Juneteenth is a state holiday. So just thinking in advance and getting that out to the public. You have not met on state holidays when the institution's closed. If you want to change that, and you do want to meet on June 19th, we'd have to discuss that. So recommending, yeah, June 26th. It also helps Mrs. Kroy because as you know, we're closing our books, so she needs every day she can. Those are the announcements.
Well, thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yep.
Is that you?
Yes.
That is Mr. Lewandowski.
All right, need a second.
Second.
All right. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Good night, everyone.